We're re-engaging conversation around the field trips. Um, I will, you know, announce that I'm asking you to speak and I'll, I'll, um, you, you at that time.
Hello?
Hey there.
Hi.
Alright, I still don't see everybody. I can see that they're on. Oh, there you are. There's Wendy.
Hi.
There's Brian. I see Jim is here. Hey, Jim. I can't hear him yet, though. She, is Jim muted?
Nope, he's unmuted.
Now he's not.
Okay.
So Heather, at seven, do you want to call the meeting to order and then I'll go into my part of the script?
Yeah, do I need to do that in accordance, in accordance first or the script first?
No, I think if you just call the meeting to order and then I'll read the confirming member access.
Oh, okay.
And then you can go into the rest.
Okay, that long giant.
Yeah, yeah, Tom, I had Tom along last week, that was a, that was a mouthful.
Well, it's like three pages.
Three pages, really?
Yes, it is with Wendy. Well, no, two and a half, okay. A little large. To make your reading, you guys are the fresh home holiday. So everybody's muted by school committee and Michael? Right now?
Correct.
Okay. And you're in control of the muting, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, it's seven o'clock and I'd like to call the school committee meeting.
Order.
As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call.
What happened? I can't hear you.
It's back.
Okay.
Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chairperson Shoka.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Bertrand.
Yes.
Secretary Leighton.
Yes.
Mr. Leveque.
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo.
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Business manager, Michael Cassidy.
Affirmative. Yes.
Teacher Amy Raboin.
Yes.
Teacher Karen Wardwell.
Yes.
Recording secretary, Susan Summers.
Yes.
And I don't see Dawn Garen, who's another teacher. Perhaps she'll join the meeting prior to the discussion and I can confirm her then. I'll turn it back over to you, Mrs. Shoka.
Okay, and this is an introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is following the guidelines from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent. The spread of all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A subsection 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you will can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 information center page, as access through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom app, Facebook Live, et cetera, as posted on the town's website, identifying how to, how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that, that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Heather Shroka, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage locally with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, allow members, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be concluded, conducted by a roll call vote. Okay, so then we're going on to, well, we're not doing a chairs report. So first item on the agenda is public comment, agenda items only. Do we have any members? From the public?
I believe any members of the public that would wish to speak for public comment need to press star nine. Mr. Beardmore, do you have any questions for pub, comments for public comment?
Uh, I don't. Can you hear me though?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Meredith Weiss, do you have any comments for public comment?
No, thank you.
That's it? No one, no public comment?
Yep, there's the one other guest in, but there's no audio for that, for that guest, so we can move on.
Um, any members of the committee have public comment? No? Okay. Um, line item transfers for approval?
None this evening.
Okay, we have minutes to review and approve. Regular session, March 11th, ninth, uh, 2020, and executive session, February 26, 2020. Has everyone taken a look and reviewed them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Carol is on mute. Brian is on mute.
Alright, Brian is now unmuted.
Okay.
Passes Mrs. Ashambo.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I will, and everyone's looked at them. Do we have any changes? No? Correct? Okay, um, I will take a motion to approve the minutes.
This is Tim Leveque. I will make a motion to approve the regular session minutes of March 11th and the executive session minutes of February 26th.
Do I have a second?
Yes, this is Wendy Bertrand. I second the motion.
All in favor? We need a roll call vote, right? We need a roll call vote.
Uh, Mrs. Shoka?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Leveque?
Yes.
Okay, um, superintendents report? Dr. Burnham?
So I wanted to provide some school closure updates. We heard today at 3:30 that the governor is extending the closure of Massachusetts schools through Friday, May 1st, reopening Monday, May 4th. The Commissioner of Education has scheduled a conference call with all superintendents this Friday, March 27th. We will receive additional guidance regarding expectations for teaching and learning for the extended closure. Our eligible families are receiving breakfast and lunches. Our food service staff have created grab and go uh, packages that contain lunch and breakfast. And those are currently being distributed for the five days worth of food, three times per week. We are delivering grab and go packages to any families who do not have the means to come and pick them up. We have gathered data regarding the technology needs of our students in grades K through seven. We have enough Chromebooks to distribute to families with no device to access online learning resources, and for those families having only one device for multiple users. We will be contacting these families to provide additional information regarding distribution of devices. We will also be contacting our pre-K families regarding distribution of iPads. As a reminder for everyone, WGBH is broadcasting for learning Monday through Friday, noon to five, for secondary students. And their regular programming for younger students, of course, uh, is maintained. Um, I apologize that I don't have any additional information to share with you at this time. Uh, I learned of the extended closure this afternoon at 3:30 watching the, um, the governor's press conference. As soon as I have additional information, I will certainly be sharing it, uh, with staff, students, and families.
Thank you. Um, so we have new business action, budget update through April 7th, 2020. Would that be you, Mr. Cassidy?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So I, I distributed an email, uh, to the superintendent, uh, to be forwarded to you for your consideration tonight. Uh, so there's a lot of information, um, in, in this memorandum. Uh, I want to highlight, um, uh, a multitude of things here, but it, uh, there are two actions that are coming out of this, this memorandum that I, um, that the superintendent and I are proposing to the school committee. So we'll go through those motions, uh, uh, any questions, a- a- as I kind of, uh, described this memorandum, uh, and budget update. So, um, you know, the, the commissioner of, uh, of education is, is really strongly suggesting that all districts, pay all employees, uh, during this closure. And, uh, we are currently paying our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our secretaries, our custodians, uh, food service workers through this, uh, th- this time period. I, I just want to take a step back here because, uh, it, it seems so long ago, it, that at one point, uh, the superintendent, uh, along with some other communities that are adjacent to Lunenburg, basically shut down for two weeks and we were committed to a closure for two weeks and paying our staff. And then the governor came in and did an extension and that commitment to pay those employees, um, it was extended out to, to April 7th. So that's, it's, that's a little history. It didn't, it didn't happen that long ago, but i- it's kind of how we got to this April 7th date. Now, it looks like it's, it's extended, but I don't want to get to that point right now. As far as the budget, what I'm, I'm worried about or what I'm asking you to consider are expenses, uh, right now, uh, for, uh, salaries for those, for those people. Um, you know, w- within that mix, there are some special cases. We do have one long-term sub at, uh, Turkey Hill, who's substituting for a teacher who's doing t- uh, teacher duties. So though, um, I'm not recommending substitutes be paid. Uh, th- this is a long-term substitute who's been doing teaching duties and is doing the enrichment for the class. So I'm including that person, uh, for consideration to be, uh, to be paid continuously, as long as they're, they're, they're providing that enrichment and wherever else we may go toward this education process. The, um, so, so, so those people, uh, that I talked about, uh, paraprofessionals and teachers, uh, and secretaries, they're in the budget. So, um, th- those, and the custodians, they're in the budget. So the, the, the challenge for me as a business manager and for us as a school district is really looking at people that fall outside of the local budget. So we're talking about our, uh, food service program and our extended day program. So our substitutes in, in our, um, food service program are not being paid. And our substitutes in our extended day program is not, are not being, currently being paid. Uh, we do have some full-time staff and permanent staff that are doing work and kind of moving forward. So, uh, so those expenses, those salary expenses need to be absorbed by the local budget. And, uh, through April 7th, I've calculated that the cafeteria workers' salary and wages for that time period is $22,035. Extended day program, um, permanent employees, that cost is $8,444. Because they're, they're paid out of revolving accounts, the, the revolving has stopped. We're not taking any more money in, um, because the services have, have stopped for, for students. So we have to absorb those costs. And when we get to the motion, I'll, uh, you have to consider that we, we will be absorbing, um, those costs throughout the end of the school year. So that's, um, but they're, you know, their, their time and effort may, uh, is going to incre- decrease. So wh- while we're on that subject, let me talk about potential costs for carrying our extended day staff. So there's four members there. So that's an additional $25,000 on local budget. Uh, we, obviously, we're gonna, I just want to let you know, we're going to exhaust whatever balance that we have of in our revolving accounts first, before we, um, we, we do a transfer of funds to, uh, from the local, uh, from the revolving account to the local budget. The food service program staff is another $75,000. And the, and that, that amount can only go down based upon the hours that they work. So that's if everyone is working, uh, their, their regular hours, which I don't see happening. I think there's going to be a reduction in some of those hours just based upon this grab and go program. So let's talk about the grab and go program. Uh, since our, since we closed and until April 7th, that cost, uh, is $7,700 is what we, we encumbered for purchase orders to, to, to create those, uh, breakfast and lunches. I just want to repeat what the superintendent has said, uh, that these, uh, uh, breakfast and lunches uh, serve our low-income families in Lunenburg. And, um, they are, so th- they are preparing meals three days a uh, excuse, oh, let's start over. They are preparing, uh, five meals a week, uh, three days at our fac- facility at the, the middle high school. So there is going to be a reduction in hours just based upon them only reporting to work for three days a week. So, um, so that's an update on, on some of the expenses that will need to be absorbed into the, uh, the local budget. So at, at this point in the memorandum, I, 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 I am making a recommendation, uh, for a motion, which I've shared with, uh, the committee, and it was amended to include the grab and go program expenses. And, uh, I'm, I'm asking the committee to take a look at that motion. I can answer any questions related to the salaries, related to the grab and go program. Um, so I can, I can take questions before a motion is, uh, the, uh, the motion is proposed. That, and, and I can just say that motion, uh, that you have i- is circulating among, uh, other districts as far as, uh, the school committee, um, uh, being aware of, 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 um, the, the district's commitment to pay people for hours that they work. So, uh, that's not something I drafted up, but that's some, um, solicitor in some district created that for their s- school committee and, and that is, seems to be the document or motion that's being, um, read aloud at, at these virtual, um, uh, school committee meetings. So that's, that's the origin of, of that document. So I, I didn't, I didn't create that. So I, I'm here for any questions?
Um, does anybody, do, do any of you have questions? To ask? Wendy, Ms. Bertrand?
Yes, I have a question. The total you gave us, can you just go through again through the April 7th and then the projection out? You didn't have the project, projection to continue that through May 4th, correct?
Yeah, you know, the, I, uh, so I'll, I'll read aloud what I wrote in the memorandum, so, so the public can hear the amounts.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, uh, I prepared this, um, this memorandum last week and things, uh, changing very quickly. And though, and I'm not trying to hide information, we had done some projections. I had shared those numbers with the superintendent, like, but, you know, by s- by saying that we, um, this is going to extend, I di- I didn't want to, to blow, set that happen, but, um, I, so l- l- let's talk about the, the memorandum. So this is for the, the, the closure, all of the closure, um, um, that we're talking about. And it started on May, um, excuse, March 16th through, uh, April 7th. We're all ca- all cafeteria salary and wages. It's $22,035. So, and I want to highlight that that includes the staff and it includes the director of food service uh, to, um, to do the, the grab and go program. And that, that started a little bit late, so we only got 14 days of meals. Uh, I believe that started on, uh, superintendent, it was either the Wednesday or Thursday of that week. Yeah. And, uh, so we had, we had, um, uh, so for, for those 14 days, the cost was $7,700. And, and that's a high point. That's, 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 uh, that number can go down based upon the number of meals that we, we anticipate serving. So, um, uh, from my numbers, I haven't seen 200 families, uh, come to the, the middle high school yet. So that number is going to go down, uh, just so you're aware. And then the extended day program, the salary wages costs are $8,444. And that's for the, uh, the two full-time staff workers there who work 40 hours each. And then we have two permanent employees, Ben, and I'll call them benefited employees too, because they get health insurance too. They work 25 to, to 30 hours a week. And so for that time period, that cost, the cost is $8,444. So the total right now that we would be absorbing through April, uh, April 7th would be $38,179. Now, uh, the motion reads that, uh, that you are ready to commit to funding. I calculated th- there's 47 remaining school days left, uh, paying our food service staff through that time period for the hours that they actually worked. Not, you know, th- they're not getting their, uh, their regular hours. So, uh, so when they come and they, and, and I anticipate there will likely be a reduction in food service just because they're only reporting three days a week in our extended day program. Um, you know, I know they're going to be working on some small projects, but I anticipate some of those uh, re- hours will be reduced, uh, but enough to cover their health insurance. So let's go over those costs one more time. The, the, so I am anticipating the ex- extended day would be an additional $25,000. And the food service would be an additional $100,000. $100,000 salary and wages and so salary wages of $75,000 and, uh, the food purchases are additional $25,000. So there's a potential, I say a potential of $125,000 that will have to be absorbed into the local budget. You know, moving forward, um, I, I just have a feeling I'm going to be providing, uh, budget updates for every single, uh, meeting that we move forward. I will be happy to give you updates if I see any fluctuations. I think these, uh, these, these amounts are worst-case scenario. I think these amounts are going to go down, uh, salary and wages and possibly the food. But I will keep the school committee up to date, um, on this. So
You have any questions?
Can I, can I just say one more thing while it's on my mind? And I, I, I want to hear, I want to answer the next question, but, uh, so we, we did get news that, um, well, all districts got news that, uh, the, uh, uh, the eligibility for reimbursement has changed, but it hasn't reached, uh, Lunenburg level. Meaning, uh, you know, at one point, the, uh, the government was going to reimburse districts that were 50% 50% or higher. Uh, I don't think we're, uh, and I know that, that there was some adjustments in, in the, uh, the, uh, the recent federal legislation that was, uh, voted on. But I don't think, uh, we, we may not get reimbursement uh, based upon some current language that are, that we're, uh, reading, um, at that level. So, um, maybe someday, maybe that, maybe at some point, maybe the state will, um, will look at this and, and, and reimburse, uh, districts, uh, on the people that we serve. I can tell you that we are prepared for reimbursement. We are documenting every low-end family, low-income family that are getting a breakfast and every low-end family, uh, and student that are, that's, that it's getting a lunch. So when they say, well, uh, we'll reimburse you, we will be in a good position. We have been, uh, tracking all this data and we'll be ready for that reimbursement if it does happen. So that's an update on that.
Does anyone else have a question? Jim, did you have a question? Brian, you have a question?
I had a question about the, the date. Uh, you had mentioned the April 7th date with the news coming out today. Does it make sense to extend it to, uh, May 1st or even discuss about the end of the school year?
So
Back and back.
That's a good question. The, the, the memo states in the first line that, uh, that you, uh, you would be, um, um, participating and supporting these hourly salaries based upon what the governor is, um, um, is saying the schools are closed still. So i- in my original, uh, memorandum, there was a recommendation on a, uh, a motion. Please scrap that. We've got a better one. So I, I believe the superintendent shared one with you. And in that first line, it, it talks about, and let me just pull it up for a second. I'll, I'll, I'll repeat it.
Do you want me to read it, Michael?
Uh,
I have it right up.
Hold, no, hold, do you, well, hold on a second.
Okay.
So in the, in the first line, it, 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 it gives the date of April, April 6th. And it says inclusive or such later date as the governor of Massachusetts may determine, uh, for the, for the continued closure of school. So, uh, basically that is saying that, um, if the, the governor extends this closure to May 15th, that, that, that we're committed to paying these employees on, based upon the number of hours that they work. So, so that kind of, that kind of captures that.
Any other questions? Jim? Carol? And when you say it's going to be absorbed into the local budget? And when you say it's going to be absorbed into the local budget, Mr. Cassidy, does that mean our local budget or the town?
That means our local budget and, and we're in very good shape to absorb the, those salaries. I just want to let you know that.
Okay.
You should know that.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, I'll leave it up to the chairperson. I can continue with the, the report and then you can address the two, uh, recommended memos, I mean, uh, motions. Or you could take the motion that, uh, the superintendent, uh, sent you earlier. I'll leave it up to you.
Well, let's, we can do the first piece with the motion now and then you can continue on and then the second piece.
Okay. Yeah, very good.
Um, so I need a motion and I'll read the motion and then I'll need somebody to, okay. Motion, I need to take motion that during the period starting March 16th, twenty-twenty to April 6th, twenty-twenty inclusive or to such later date as the governor of Massachusetts may determine for the continued closure of all public schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or the superintendent may determine for the continued closure of the Lunenburg Public Schools, whichever date is later to, due to the COBID nineteen in the tw- twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year. Herein after referred to as the closure period, the Lunenburg School Committee, subject to appropriation, shall pay the regular wages for work days during the closure period to each employee of the Lunenburg Public Schools, excluding temporary staff or eh, day substitutes, provided that each such employee to be paid performs work that may be requested or required by the employee supervisor during the workdays to be paid in the closure period, period. Nothing in this motion limits any rights that any employee may have to take vacation, sick or personally during the closure period. Jim?
I, um, just a point of clarification, I believe that there was a amended version of this to include shall pay the grab and go program expenses for low-income students and regular wages.
Okay, uh, this is the one I just got on the email just earlier today. So what, I don't, the amended one, do you have it?
I do have it.
You can read it?
I, I will read it. I, I, is there, but it looked like Mr. Cassidy may have something.
All right, I was just gonna, I was just gonna mention that the, the grab and go program, uh, language should be in there as well.
Okay, because this is the one I just got.
Uh, I, I just noticed there was a new one in right before I, I dialed in.
Oh. All right.
All right. So, um, I will make a motion that during the period starting March sixteenth, twenty-twenty to April sixth, twenty-twenty inclusive or to such later date as the governor of Massachusetts may determine for the continued closure of all public schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Or the superintendent may determine for the continued closure of Lunenburg Public Schools, whichever date is later due to COVID nineteen in the twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty school year herein referred to as the closure period. Lunenburg School Committee, subject to appropriation, shall pay the grab and go program expenses for low-income students and regular wages for work during this, this closure period. Each employee of Lunenburg Public Schools, excluding temporary staff or day substitutes. Provided that each such are by the employee supervisor during workdays to be paid in closure period. Nothing in this motion limits any rights that any employee may have to take at vacation, sick or personally during the closure period.
Second.
Mr. Leighton and seconds it all in favor? We need a roll call vote. Yeah.
Mrs. Oshambo?
Yes.
Ms. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Levek?
Yes.
Mrs. Shoka?
Yes.
Okay, now, Mr. Cassidy, you can go to the other updates in the budget.
Okay. Well, thank you, uh, for approving that motion. Uh, means a lot to a lot of people. I just want to let you know that. Um, I saw just an update. So we, um, uh, last week, uh, did a purchase order freeze except for, um, uh, new purchases of services that are related to the health and safety needs of the, uh, of, uh, of Lunenburg Public Schools and some of the grab and go expenses. Um, um, and then, uh, any, uh, to support any enrichment, uh, delivery services to students. So no new POs are, are happening at this point. So I just want to alert the school committee that we do have some, uh, current contracts that, um, uh, that we're, we're kind of stuck in the middle on. And, um, so I know that's kind of vague, but I'll get specific, which is we've got transportation contracts and collaborative contracts that, uh, ours, obviously our students are not being transferred and out-of-district students aren't getting any services. So I, I'll provide an update on, um, you know, the recommendation. I'll provide a recommendation to the superintendent to bring forward to you, uh, based upon, um, any feedback that we get from, uh, Desi uh, on, um, what they think should be paid that's fair and equitable. And, um, um, and maybe consider, uh, what some of the other districts are doing around us. Um, uh, to, to, to kind of support, um, uh, yeah, our partners in education. So, uh, ju- just stay tuned on that. It's, um, uh, is, there's a lot of things in development. So, um, and it's a real challenge for, uh, uh, districts. Um, so the, the, the next thing I'm going, I'm recommending is that the school committee, uh, issue a hiring freeze. Um, you know, I think it's, uh, it, it demonstrates that, you know, we've, not that there's a big hiring push going on right now, but I, 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 I am asking you to, um, to consider this, uh, and as positions become available, you know, essential or crucial positions become available, that the superintendent and I, uh, present, uh, justification why we need to refill that position. So there is a proposed motion in the memorandum, um, that I've crafted. If, uh, if that, if you have any questions on that, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll take them now. But I, uh, if not, if you can consider that motion, I would appreciate that.
Does, does it? You have any questions, Brian, or do you want to make?
I had a, I had a question about, um, just the timing of it. It, it didn't seem to have an end where if this gets lifted and the school wants to do some hiring right away, there's, we'd have to have a meeting first to, to open that up. I don't want to limit the superintendent from hiring at the end of this, if this is, that first week is important to hire someone.
Yeah, I, I just, uh, I, I publicly, I think this, th- this is a, a motion that demonstrates that the school committee is kind of locking in on, on, on freezing some costs moving forward. Um, you know, I, I, I like your optimism that, that at some point this is going to end. And at that point, we, if, if you've, if you feel that we can lift this, we can do that. Um, but I think the, um, um, and I, I, that would be obviously centered around a, um, a school committee meeting, which I, you know, I'm not really sure what the schedule is. But if, if you try to keep it to every two weeks, I think, um, I think that's not going to be a deterrent for us to, to get things posted. Um, you know, i- i- there is some time to, to get a, a, a really good posting together anyway and get it ready to, to go. Um, and, and we do have a couple of positions on the horizons, uh, due to retirements. But I think this is really tied to, uh, the budget and what we're going to be looking at in any, um, um, consideration of staff, uh, uh, that we may shift based, based upon a retirement. Um, so I don't think this is going to hinder us posting and awarding positions. Um, and I sho- I sure hope it comes to an end and, and we can, um, we can kind of lift this from, from our operations. But it, it's a good question. Um, I just, um, I don't, I think it's going to hinder our operations right now.
Jim?
Uh, this is Jim Oveck. Um, so to, to the superintendent, uh, on this motion, how do you feel that this may hinder any of your abilities to proceed forward?
Uh, not at this time. I think that, um, you know, if there were a critical position that we felt we needed to fill, I would bring that forward to you at the next meeting, um, and justify the need to fill the position. And then you could vote on that at that time.
Uh, thank you.
Um, any other questions? Wendy, Carol, no?
No.
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion with the language.
I can move.
You have, care, Ms. Starbalk? Okay.
Um, this is Carol Ashambo and I would make a motion that the school committee authorize the superintendent to implement a staff hiring freeze. Any positions to be posted will need to be presented by the superintendent of schools to school committee for their approval to post.
I need a second?
This is Jim Oveck. I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Oshambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Levek?
Yes.
Mrs. Shoka?
Yes.
Okay, I, um, so I just got, I, I just a couple of final updates on this memorandum and thank you for approving that, uh, that motion. Um, so there, there is a, um, there, there is a rule out there that school staff, teachers, paraprofessionals cannot report to their building at this time. We've got, uh, custodians cleaning and sterilizing the entire building. Um, you know, at the point, at the time of this memorandum, you know, town hall and TCP was still open. Um, I'll just share that, uh, that, uh, I ca- I can't speak for town hall. I, I know TCP has a very limited staff. Uh, we, we've really downsized, uh, you know, taking shifts to, to, uh, to work from TCP and then taking some, uh, shifts that working, uh, from home. Um, so I just want to let you know, and, and we've had no public visitors except for the mail, uh, since the, the closer, closure began. Um, school custodians are still reporting for cleaning. Uh, cafeteria staff are reporting to, uh, the middle high school to do the grab and go program. Uh, but they're, they're limited to the, the, their kitchen area and the cafeteria where they're, they're preparing, uh, the meals. And then, um, um, secretaries is, are corresponding with the staff and principals and central office from home. So there's an update on, uh, operationally how we're doing. Uh, there's a lot of stuff going on at the schools. Uh, but I'm just kind of reporting on, on how, how business is going. Um, you know, the staff has been, been reminded that, uh, you know, uh, in the event that, uh, uh, an employee is, uh, diagnosed with the virus that, uh, uh, there is, um, confidentiality and privacy around that individual. So that's, that, you know, that's more of probably an HR thing than a business thing, but, um, it, it certainly, um, uh, it, it, our goal is really to protect that person's privacy, um, during their, their difficult time. And finally, the FY twenty-one budget process, um, you know, I think there's a, there's a new date, uh, Ms. Ashambo has a, a, a new date on the, um, the potential town meeting and some comments that the, um, uh, town manager made. I believe that there was the board of selectors meeting last night. So, um, I'll just say on our end, I, I'm just, we're just waiting for the process to begin. Um, so I don't know if, if anyone else, uh, Ms. Ashambo or maybe even the superintendent, if you, if you've had any correspondence with the town manager on next steps. Uh, but at, once again, at the time of this memorandum, we were kind of in a holding pattern, uh, to decide what, what was going to be next.
I have not gotten any details yet from the town manager on that.
Carol?
Um, I can only say what was stated in the selectmen's meeting last night. Um, the town meeting has been moved to June thirteenth. And, um, the town manager did state, and I put it in quotations and watched it again to make sure I was correct. We will need to start the whole budget from scratch. So I don't know what that means for us. I don't know what that means going forward. But that is what was reported at the selectmen's meeting last night.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Great.
Mr. Levek?
Miss? Yeah. Wait, what's matter?
He's muted.
Oh, you're muted?
Yeah, I was muted and I could not get unmuted. Uh, I, I muted myself and then it said the, the, the host muted me and I couldn't unmute myself. Uh, one question about the facilities. I know that there's some, uh, I've seen some social media posts about parents and children leaving things in the schools. They've been unable to get them. Um, I know there was a, a day provided, I believe it was the sixteenth, for students to come and get their things. Um, is there any plan do we know of to allow students to get their books? And if we're going to potentially move out, move beyond, uh, enrichment?
So we've been contacted by a couple of parents who needed to get, um, a pair of glasses, some medication. Um, and we've arranged for the custodian to retrieve items, meet the parent at the door and, and pass those items along. Um, until I have more detail on what the expectation is for teaching and learning moving forward through the remainder of the closure, um, I don't know that it's, uh, necessary yet for students to have access to the building to come retrieve books. Um, since we're working online and, you know, many of our, um, more recent book purchases should have online access, uh, that we could explore. Um, so at this time, um, I'm not looking to open the buildings to have students come and read two, um, items. If there's something that's of a critical, uh, nature, um, folks have been contacting the principals and we've been trying to find a way to get them what it is that they're looking for.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cassidy?
Yes, I had a question about the custodial staff and facilities. Uh, I know you had mentioned cleaning. Um, I had heard other places weren't doing heavy cleaning because the students were going to be out for a while and that the virus would not survive long periods of time. So I didn't know if this would be a good opportunity to get that additional list of repairs done, anything that needed to get done, or maybe starting summer work lists that could be done as additional activities for custodial staff to get done.
Yep. So let me jump in on that. Um, I know that Mr. Londa has a list of projects to be completed with our own staff. But he also has projects that would require us, um, contracting with outside vendors. And, uh, right now vendors have availability. Um, the challenge for us on any projects moving forward, whether done by our own staff or done through contracted vendors. Um, if there are any purchases or payments that are required, uh, at this point, we, we would have to have the town manager approve that process moving forward. So I, I do know that we have submitted, um, a list of, um, projects through Mr. Londa to, um, the town manager for consideration to be done during the closure period.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Um, old business going on to Springfield trips. Superintendent Burr?
Okay, which, uh, trip would we like to discuss first? We have the, um, April Vacation Week music trip to Philadelphia and New York City. We have the eighth grade. We have the eighth grade Washington DC trip in late May, and we have the Galapagos Islands in June.
Let's do it in order. Let's do the April one.
All right, so I will now unmute Mrs. Wardwell, who is the advisor for the music field trip.
I can, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Karen Wardwell, high school music teacher. So upon receiving the news this afternoon, I did email Dr. Burnham and also emailed our travel consultant at Rogers Travel just to let him know what the status was, not sure if he had heard. He did respond pretty quickly, so I have instructions from him following this meeting as to how I should proceed, assuming at this point that there's probably no way we can. And, you know, his instructions were to basically supply a letter on letterhead with your recommendation, explaining the fact that school is closed, we're looking out for the health and safety of our students. Then the travel consultant and their company, their team will send that to all of the vendors who are currently being bombarded with requests for refund, refunds, excuse me, from us and everybody else that's canceling their trips. So they're estimating about a four to eight week time period between when we begin this process of notifying and or canceling, and families receiving the refund. So that's kind of update from BRT, and I will be in touch with him tomorrow to get that ruling if that's where we're heading unfortunately, but I did reach out to him as soon as I got the information. So, I mean, I don't, at this point, are, is there a vote to be taken? Because it's while we're out of school, I unfortunately don't think there's a way to safely travel. I don't know what the specific conditions are in New York. I know they're not good at all. Details on a travel ban.
I think that New York schools are closed as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. But do you want us to take a motion?
I would suggest that since this was an out of state field trip that you approved, that you should take a vote as to whether or not this trip moves forward. You know, in conversation with Mrs. Wardwell, the schools are closed through the end of April. By order of the governor. The governor has for weeks indicated that non-essential travel should not be taking place, and then went further to say that travel outside of the state should not be taking place. So given all of that, I would recommend that you consider canceling the trip.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or discussion, or Jim?
No, I was just gonna actually make a motion.
Okay.
That we, that we, based on those reasons specifically, with the, with the school being out and people being told to self-quarantine if they've been in New York City.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
After they leave the city, it's, it's too much a risk for students and our, our faculty and family friends. And I would recommend that we, we please cancel the trip. Or disapprove the trip.
The one thing I will also say is we were, you know, waiting it out until the government made a decision because hopefully that will help the travel company recoup as much of the money that the parents already paid.
I, I also was holding out hope for a vacation that week as well. But, yeah, regretfully, I would make that motion. We, we cancel the April trip.
Second?
This is Wendy Bertrand. This is Wendy Bertrand. I second the motion.
Okay, I need a roll call vote.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Levek?
Yes.
Mrs. Shoka?
Yes.
Thank you for your support, and hopefully we'll be able to reschedule something else.
Hope so.
Thank you, Karen.
Of course, thank you. Be well.
Okay, so then DC is next.
Correct.
Mrs. Rob-
Let me unmute. Mrs. Reboin?
Hi.
Hi, so this is Amy Reboin. I've been in contact with our travel agent, and at the moment, there are three possibilities. The first possibility is that we vote tonight to simply cancel the trip. The issue with that is if we do cancel, parents will absolutely be out their initial deposit of two hundred and fifty dollars plus any penalties that the travel agent has to incur on top of that because the district cancels the trip. Another option is, which I think is the best option, is to wait two or three more weeks. If we sit tight and our travel agent has said that she will not ask parents to make their final payment, that she's simply waiving that deadline for the moment, wait a few weeks and see if we get any new directives from the state, the government regarding the travel. If we hold out and we're not the ones canceling, that's the best chance of recouping money for parents. No matter what, parents will not be getting back their two hundred and fifty dollar deposit even in that circumstance because that money has already paid for all of the administration of setting up and scheduling the trip in the first place with the vendors. The third option is to reschedule this trip for potentially the fall. It's a little bit of a risk as far as hotel availability. We wouldn't be the only school trying to do that. The cost wouldn't really change. It might go up a tiny bit or down a tiny bit, but basically, parents would have paid for that trip and they would just take it at a later date. My concerns about the reschedule, I mean, the benefit is I hate to see these kids not get their eighth grade trip that they've waited all these years to take. The downfall is we'd be taking freshmen and asking them to miss four days of a week of school in the fall of their freshman year. It impacts the high school and the high school teachers. And in addition, what do we do about those kids who go to Monty Tech or who leave the Lunenburg District for high school? So I think it's a tricky, there's a lot of unknowns with that, but it is on the table as well. My personal recommendation would be sit tight, ask parents not to make the final payment. Let's give it another couple of weeks and see if the decision gets made for us, and at that time, we could decide about a reschedule or a straight cancellation.
That would be my recommendation as well.
Does anybody have any questions about this? Jim?
Yeah, this is Jim Levek. I think the only, the only question is maybe there could be a combination of the wait it out and maybe look at fall as an option. We could look at both of those options. There, there are certainly challenges with a fall trip, but like you said, if, I, I hate to see these kids miss out on that opportunity. And if we could afford the opportunity to provide to them later, that could be an option.
And that's fine. We can absolutely look at some preliminary investigation.
The other piece on that is, you know, twenty some odd of our students will be at Monty Tech. If, if we decide that we're looking at a fall option, you know, I could certainly reach out and have a conversation with the superintendent at Monty Tech about the possibility of allowing students to recoup this trip.
Yeah.
But other than that, I think the, the initial thought of still waiting it out and see what happens makes sense. That's basically what I did with my vacation. I waited out to see until the authority said I can't go, and if I can't go, then, then I can't. But, and then I have some opportunities of recouping some of those funds.
So I need a motion then to wait it out?
So I will make a motion, this is Jim Levek, I will make a motion to wait it out for another three weeks before voting again.
A second?
Carol Ashambo, I would second that.
And so all in favor, we need a roll call vote?
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Levek?
Yes.
I have to unmute Mr. Leighton and Mr. Leighton. Mrs. Shoka?
Yes. Okay, so we'll invite Mrs. Reboin back to another remote meeting in April with hopefully better news.
Thank you, and I just, I appreciate the school committee, the superintendent, and the parents and families' patience as we're trying to make the decision that's in their best health and financial interest.
And so the only question is how can we get out the information to the parents, the eighth grade parents about the last payment? Being pulled off, just so that they all know not to send it in.
I'm perfectly happy doing that unless Dr. Burnham would rather do that.
I think it would be appropriate coming from the administration of the school. Mr. Santry could send a communication out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I would also be very cautious about planning any trips in the next twelve months, even the fall could be very problems, just if there's not a vaccine out in the next twelve months, we could have issues in the fall as well.
Sure, we could be in the same position in the fall as we are now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a second reading of some policies. Jim?
The Galapagos trip.
One more.
I didn't think that was on, oh, I didn't even know we were talking about Galapagos. It's summer. It's June, whatever.
Okay, well, I thought I heard the superintendent mention it.
I did. They did.
Yes, she is.
Dawn?
Hey.
Hey, where are you?
I'm home.
Well, there you are. Okay, Galapagos.
So I hope you all are, are well, and this is kind of a new thing, obviously, with this technology. Just when you think it was great, it's even greater than you ever anticipated. So I'm here to just discuss the Galapagos trip, and honestly, I'm still in the holding pattern. The EF Company has reached out to us several times with updates, basically opening up their policy even to greater extent, making it more flexible, even more rebates and all that, or refunds if we need to. So I'm, I, like I said, I don't need to have a decision even to the beginning of May, so I'm here to check in, but, you know, I don't really need any major decisions made yet. So, again, like, like Heather, you just said, Ms. Seroka, excuse me, that it's summer. We're hoping by June, we might be able to get the heck out of here and, and go the Galapagos, but if we can't, then we can very easily schedule till next June. And they even have more flexibility with the seniors that, you know, may or may not be able to go still.
Okay, so I think on this one, it's another wait and see, right? That's the recommendation. What do you, is that what you think, Dr. Burnham?
I, I would agree.
Yeah.
And I don't think that we need to make a motion on this one just yet. We'll just invite Mrs. Garen back with an update.
Okay. So we don't need to make a motion on this. No decision's gonna be made. We're waiting. We're gonna have her back. Okay.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dawn.
Thank you. Take care, everybody.
Yeah, be safe, be well.
Be good. Go wash your hands.
Okay, so now the second reading of policies five two one eight and five two one eight point oh one. We're waiving them? Can you just give us?
This is Jim Levek. I will motion to waive reading, second reading for policy five two one eight, which is equal education opportunities, and five two eight point zero one, which is educational equity.
Take a second.
This is Wendy Bertrand. I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor of waiving?
Roll call. Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Levek?
Yes.
Mrs. Shoka?
Yes. And now the third reading of some policies. Four one oh one point oh two, five one oh three point oh one, five two oh one point oh one, and five four oh three. How are you guys dividing that up?
This is Wendy Bertrand, and I, I can start with policy four one oh one dot oh two.
Okay.
Which is staff conflict of interest. So, third reading. No employee of the district will engage in or have financial, financial interest in directly or indirectly any activity that conflicts or raises a reasonable question of conflict with his or her duties and responsibilities in the school system. Nor will any staff member engage in any type of private business during school time or on school property except as authorized by the school district administration. Employees will not engage in work of any type where information concerning customer, client, or employer originates from any information available to them through school sources. As there should be no conflict of interest in the supervision or evaluation of employees, at no time will any administrator be responsible for the supervision and or evaluation of any employee, full-time, part-time, or temporary, who is related to him or her. In the permanent employment and assignment of personnel, close relatives may not be employed in the same school or under the same administrative unit head. One relative shall have no responsibility of a super supervisory nature over another relative. For the purpose of this policy, close relatives shall be defined as including the natural or adopted mother, father, grandmother, grandfather, or grandchild of the employee, or the spouse of the employee, and the spouse, son, son-in-law, daughter, daughter-in-law, or sibling of the employee, or any relative living in the immediate household of the employee. The superintendent may waive the provisions of this policy when the assignment or placement of both relatives is of such a nature that no reasonable alternatives are available or appropriate. Legal references MGL seventy-one, chapter fifty-two, two sixty-eight A. And this was originally revisited and approved on May twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen.
Okay. Mr. Levek, are you gonna read the next one?
Yes, policy five one zero three point zero one, school choice. It is the policy of this school district to admit non-resident students under terms and conditions of the inter-school school choice law, MGL seventy-six, twelve B, and under the following local conditions. That by the first schools committee meeting in February of every school year, the administration will determine the number of spaces in each school available to choice students. That by the first school committee meeting in February of each school year, if consideration is being given to withdraw from the provisions of the choice law, the public meeting of the school committee will be held to review this decision. Number three, that the selection of non-resident students for admission be in the form of a random drawing when the number of requests exceeds the number available spaces. All requests for admission will be drawn at that time and an ordered waiting list created. Should any non-resident selected in the drawing withdraw their application or pretend or fail to register in the time provided, that slot will be open to the next name on the waiting list. The drawing will take no place no later than March thirty-first. Former residents, students attending Ludenberg High School in grades ten, eleven, and twelve who moved from the community may continue to be enrolled under school choice. Number four, hardship cases, community and student welfare. Upon approval by the superintendent of schools, children and non-resident families may be enrolled under school choice when the general welfare of the student will clearly and significantly benefit. Number five, any student who has accepted for admission under the provisions of this policy is entitled to remain in the district until graduation from high school, except if there's a lack of funding for, of the program. The school committee shall not discriminate in the admission of any child on the basis of race. The school committee shall not discriminate in the admission of any child on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender identity, age, sexual orientation, ancestry, athletic performance, physical handicap, special need, academic performance, or proficiency in the English language, or pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions. Sources are MASC legal references, MGL seventy-one six, seven one six A, seven six six, seventy-six twelve, seventy-six twelve B, BESE regulations six zero three CMR twenty-six point zero zero, updated April third, two thousand thirteen, and approved, updated and approved again on May third, two thousand seventeen.
All right. I will move on to fifty-two oh one dot oh one, which is under curriculum and instruction. The school committee believes that materials appropriate to the needs of the school program must be available to each student and teacher. These will be furnished by the school committee subject to budgetary constraints. The task of selecting instructional materials for programs will be delegated to the professional staff of the school system because instructional programs and materials are of great importance. Only those that meet the following criteria will be approved by the committee. One, they must present fact-based views of international, national, and local issues and problems of the past, present, and future. Two, they must provide materials that stimulate growth in factual knowledge, literary appreciation, aesthetic, and ethical values. Three, they must help students develop abilities in critical reading and thinking. Four, they must help develop and foster an appreciation of cultural diversity and development in the United States and throughout the world. Five, they must provide all students an effective, basic education that does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender identity, age, sexual orientation, ancestry, athletic performance, physical handicap, special need, academic performance or proficiency in the English language, or pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions. Six, they must allow sufficient flexibility for meeting the needs of individual students and groups of students. Sources MASC legal references, MGL seventy-one forty-eight, seventy-one forty-nine, seventy-one fifty, and BESE regulation six oh three CMR twenty-six. It was first revised in December second, two thousand and four, and updated November seventh, twenty twelve.
Okay, Jim?
Policy five four zero three, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited. The school committee prohibits the use or consumption by students of alcohol, tobacco products, or drugs on school property or at any school function. A student shall not, regardless of the quantity used, consumed, possessed, buy or sell, or give away any beverage containing alcohol, any tobacco product, including but not limited to cigarettes, cigars, little cigars, chewing tobacco, pipe tobacco, and snuff, and electronic cigarettes, electronic cigars, electronic pipes, and other similar products that rely on vaporization or aerosol or aerosolization, steroids, or any controlled substance. Additionally, any student who is under the influence of drugs or alcohol beverages prior to or during attendance at a participation in a school-sponsored activity will be barred from that activity and may be subject to disciplinary action. This policy shall be posted on the district's website and notice shall be provided to all students and parents of this policy in accordance with state law. Additionally, the district shall file a copy of this policy with BESE in accordance with law in a manner requested by DESE. The sources MASC, March two thousand sixteen, filed J I C H legal references or messages as general law seventy-one two A, seventy-one nine six, and two seven two four zero A. Cross-references I H A M B, teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, G B E C, drug-free workplace policy, reviewed June fifteenth, two thousand five, updated and approved, May third, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the policies as read.
This is Jim Levec. I will make the motion to approve all four policies as read.
Seconded, who's?
Carol Ashambo, I can second it.
All in favor, roll call vote?
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton? Oh, he's muted again.
You're asking us to mute ourselves?
Kids are getting ready for bed. They're a little loud.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Levec?
Yes.
Mrs. Shoka?
Yes. Okay. Now we have public comment open to the public for anything that's related to the school committee. Do we have any public comment from the public?
So I just wanted to mention, in regards to the, the school trips, the field trips, I would recommend that parents and even the teachers reach out to their state representatives, state Senator Tran, state representative Hay, and even the governor's office and say, you need to cancel these trips and make them mandatory that they're canceled, and that'll help out the schools and the parents.
So I've unmuted the participants on the meeting, so Mr. Beardmore?
No comment. Good meeting.
No comment? Okay.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Mr. Beardmore.
And Meredith Weiss?
No comment. Thank you, guys. Good job.
Thanks, Mrs. Weiss. Okay, then we have nothing, right? We're not, no future topics? We have no meetings that any of us have attended?
So we were given guidance by the town manager that only essential business be conducted at our meetings until such time that we can get back to a more traditional format for our meetings.
Okay, so we can adjourn?
I will make, this is Jim Levec. I'll make the motion to adjourn at eight fourteen PM.
Second? Okay, Wendy Bertrand seconded. All in favor, roll call vote?
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Levec?
Yes.
Mrs. Shoka?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Be safe.
Be well.